All right, nine o'clock. Call this meeting to order.
Mayor Limpras?
President.
Vice Mayor Wies?
Yeah.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Councilmember Whitmer?
Here.
Councilmember DeGolia?
Yeah.
Do we have a call? Terrific. Let's move on the agenda. Next is public comments. Any member of the public wish to comment about an item that is on the agenda? Do so at this time. Okay, same time. Let's go right into the action items then. And on the first item.
Ladies and members of the council, after your last regular council meeting, you discussed the Los Lomitas water capture facility project in depth and in detail. And at that time, you sent a response back to the school district for changes to the MOU. The school district responded to that saying, you know, they would prefer the original MOU, which was with a 750 K contribution over five years and primarily the commitment to do the traffic signal at Walsh. So that was not then presented to their school board. They just responded to the town saying they would like the original and have not signed what the council sent back. So what's before you today is possible reconsideration of that counter offer back at the original MOU or consideration of an alternative project using that 13 and a half million from Caltrans for a water capture facility in Hobart Palmer Park. You have the written staff report before you. It does articulate that Caltrans has expressed that something at Hobart Palmer Park might be feasible, yet limited to that 13 and a half million dollar collaborative project amount. So that's basically what's before the council today is go back to Los Lomitas or consider pursuing something at the park. If you pursue something at the park, the deal with Los Lomitas is no longer on the table and they'll move forward with their project.
So I think that, you know, this water facility project is a great project.
Sorry, we have questions, clarifying questions or any comments?
None of this.
Okay, any clarifying questions? Yes.
So the alternative, as I understand, is Hobart Palmer Park. And I just have a question. Do we have a sense of how much flow is really at the park channel versus how much flow is actually at the Los Lomitas entrance? And if that's a significant difference or variable that we should be considering?
There was a concept plan developed, I remember, months ago, I think back when Mary Grace was here. And I think you have actually that concept plan there that was returned back to the town by Matt Paperson from the county. It does provide some of that information. I am by far nowhere near an expert in hydrology or anything, but Matt's here and Marty's here and maybe we can answer some of those questions in more detail. But it was considered to be a viable project.
Okay. So now maybe it will get answered as we go along.
Other questions?
Yeah. So what was passed out and sent out earlier, I guess yesterday, I guess was a concept of 18.6 million. And so what would be the plan to get it back to the 13.5 or 13 million because we're going to need a little bit of plus or minus, as you know? So it would be just a smaller size, a removal of the pumps as they were going to do with Los Lomitas because that's how I understand they were going to go do that. Is it feasible to consider that we can get it back in the range where the funds that are available will cover that without additional funds from the city other than the maintenance costs?
Yes, councilmember. That'd be the plan, is to right-size the project according to the funds available. And the Caltrans funds is going to stay at 13.6 million. And so we would have to design the project at Hobart Palmer Park accordingly within those funding parameters. And so the concept they have on the screen here is for 18.6 million. So we'd have to downsize that project probably to maybe a third of that or, you know, two-thirds of what's out there now.
Okay.
So build whatever we have can within the limits of the funding.
And a follow-up question, if I may. When we originally told Caltrans we would move forward, was the clock starting at that point in time?
Yes, we got about two weeks.
So we're kind of under the gun now to really make a quick decision, get them to right-size it and get moving because there was a period of time when the money was going to disappear, right?
There was a three-year time limit and then about two weeks ago, we got that notice to proceed. But per my discussion with the Caltrans representative, if the council approves to move the project, we're going to have to amend the CIA accordingly. And my hope is that we can start the clock over again.
Okay. Okay, that would be good. Thank you.
So there is on that handout that was produced, the size of this one is designed by 18 acre feet? And what was the design volume of that?
Seven.
About seven.
On seven, yeah.
So I think for Hobart Palmer Park, we'd probably be looking at maybe 10, 11.
10, 11?
Yeah, acre feet.
And would it have the pumps in?
Right now, we don't know if there's going to be pumps or not. Again, because same thing with Los Lomitas, we didn't know if we would need pumps there and we don't know at this point if we're going to need pumps at Hobart Palmer Park.
So regarding the pumps, pumps were also, one of the things, as I understood from the discussion that I was listening to on the phone, was that the pumps drove up the cost of the maintenance. Is that right?
Correct.
So they'll be a trade-off if we choose to go forward, however we're doing it. And we say, hey, we're not sure, pumps, maybe not pumps, we can get them in the cost, et cetera. Will there be, you know, the analysis of what the maintenance costs will be so we'll have a secondary opportunity to say, hey, we want the pumps and we're willing to cover that extra maintenance cost or, hey, we can't afford that maintenance at this point in time, let's forego the pumps?
Yeah, absolutely. That was part of our strategy or plan is to come back to council if you want to move forward the Hobart Palmer Park project. And then at some point, you'll have to authorize us to release an RFQ for the design firm. And then maybe when we're at 50%, we can come to back to council with options of what kind of project you want to see out there. You want it with pumps, without pumps, and what the costs are with and without for the future. So those are all things that we would come back to council with for your future decision on.
So just so I can understand, what we're doing today is simply deciding whether to continue to enter into discussion about Hobart Palmer Park, right? No guarantee that will happen, but if it does happen, we lose the opportunity to move to Los Lomitas.
Correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, I think that's sort of kind of a pause. Did you want to?
I have a comment.
Any comments?
But I do have a quick question, which is, was this report prepared for this meeting or was this prepared previously when we were looking at the detention basins at three different locations?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, well, that wasn't clear.
So do any member of the public have any comment on this? Okay, hold on a minute.
Mr. Speaker. Okay, so I think that this is a really important project for the bay. I think that it, given the analysis that we went through at the previous meeting, that it could be a very important flood control solution for Atherton. So I think it's an important project. I think that it was a project that was disruptive of Los Lomitas School and its plans for, you know, reorganizing their parking and some of their other work there. It caused them to go through a lot of changes, which is probably why they felt as strongly as they did about the amount of contribution they wanted from the town if we were to do it there and it would be an imposition on them because they have this water treatment facility underneath their parking lot. I also think that it presents some maintenance issues for us, like I think, well, what if we have a problem and we have to go in and work on it at a time that school is in session? That could be very disruptive, but if it was a big problem, it'd be very disruptive. So I also understand that their principal desire with their reorganization is the streetlight that they've requested at the intersection of Walsh and Alameda. And we have always been very strongly in favor of focusing on safe routes to school and what we could do to improve safe routes to school. And I'm sure that that will go forward and once we get resident comment, which I'm hopeful will be supportive of it, that we'll support that. But in the long run, I think that Hobart Palmer Park is a better location for this water treatment facility and it's really a win-win because it eliminates the disruption to them and it does delay it because we have to go through the engineering to make sure it will work. I also think there's a potential benefit for us. I mean, the school was going to get all of its surface work done as part of this project that is above the project and we would be able to improve wherever that project is located. I know that this plan is for it to be under the large lawn where the soccer field is. If it were to go under the lawn at the entrance, then it might defer some of our costs that we would otherwise be incurring, that we've approved to go forward on in the budget. So I don't know if that would work, but I think that should be looked at when they evaluate it. At the end of the day, I strongly support looking at the light and evaluating that for the school and I want to work closely with the school, but it seems like a benefit to both to move this from the school to the park. And I would support that.
So from my perspective and from listening to the discussion the other night, you know, Los Lomitas wasn't sure whether or not they eventually might want to build on the parking lot. And one of the things that I heard them say is, hey, you know, going forward with this project is going to take away that opportunity. So I think that I too am in agreement that we would move this thing to the park. I think it gives us an opportunity, you know, to save that upfront cost if we choose to go forward with a light like we would do with any other jurisdiction that was sharing an entrance to the light. You know, I'm sure the school district would be amenable and hopefully have asked to cover their one quarter cost like we would do, like with the county or anything like that. With regards to putting it on the athletic fields, I think that actually this could be even a bigger win for us because I know organizations like AYSO and potentially even the lacrosse league, but AYSO for sure, has funded all-purpose fields, all-weather fields at some of the schools when we were putting them in as a, you know, contribution to their using those fields under all conditions. So I think that if we were to do something like that on the athletic fields, we should approach these organizations that are using our fields and see if they would be interested in doing that because, you know, it's a win for them as well and cuts down our water usage, it cuts down, you know, our maintenance in that part as well. So I think that that would be another reason why we would go to the park. So I'm in favor of the park and, but, you know, of course, having it redesigned to the appropriate level and having it come back so that we would have a choice on the maintenance cost and the operational cost. Thank you.
Okay. As I said the other night when we were discussing this issue, I believed at the time and still do that this project is a good project for the benefits of the bay and it benefits, I think, all parties involved. I'm apologetic in some sense that this has kind of been an express lane for everybody in the district and we have a tendency, and I know that the district has a tendency to want to, no pun intended, absorb all the issues. And we haven't had a great opportunity to absorb a lot of the issues that are coming forth and making decisions related to traffic light and the flooding process and all that. It's just not the way to create good government. So that being said, our goal on this project itself and getting involved with Caltrans on this issue was to benefit the bay. And based on what we know related to water flow and what Caltrans wants to do with the removal of PCB levels, the benefit downstream has higher benefit to that need because of the fact that the flow for a portion of El Camino Real and the downstream component actually also flows in there. So I think that we, as a community, give it a slightly additional benefit by moving it, which doesn't seem like very far, but it captures that corridor component, that central corridor component along a state highway. So that's another bonus benefit. Secondarily, we can actually establish another benefit in the park by having the use of gray water components and creating some other benefits out of a retention or reuse component that we can get in a 22-acre park. We've obviously experienced some issues related to droughts. So the use of gray water, that possibility, we have embedded it, but, you know, it's something else to consider. So between the two locations, I think that as a town, we have a higher benefit and if the clock resets, we have a little bit more time to, you know, iron out these small issues and still move forward with a huge project that benefits everybody. So let's kind of grab.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'm really happy that we have these options to look at and I'm very grateful to the Los Lomitas School District for being willing to look at it for their project, for their site, because it seems to me, I don't know, that the potential flooding at that Alameda channel is greater than flooding downstream. Because I've seen the flooding that comes off of the channel down Walsh Road and coming at that juncture. So my concern is how will that potential flooding at that Alameda channel opening be managed? And so that, I think, is something that we can't lose sight of. I'm a little concerned about that. Some of my concerns for the park, although it does appear that we do have the space, the ability to redirect the flooding, is there enough flow to fill up two chambers? I mean, if you look at the video of Lakewood, Lakewood project, it's actually on two levels of flooding and diversion of that. How the disruption of the park, how many trees are going to be impacted? I think that's a huge consideration if we do decide to move this project to the park. And the, but weighing the benefits against the risks of moving it to the park, we do then have control over it. Whereas at the Los Lomitas, it was almost like fitting a square peg into a round hole because a cabinet underneath the parking structure and all the potential associated risks that might happen in the future, that would be really disruptive. So I am grateful for the Los Lomitas School District and the board to even consider it. It is a great benefit to the bay, there's no doubt about it. And what we can do to clean up our channel because clearly we've got toxins coming off of the Woodside Horse Park as well as 280 as well as El Camino and on and on. So I think that whatever we do, and with Caltrans itself, we need to right-size it, come in the budget. We want to pay for everything, all the top, all the other things. I don't know what councilmember Whitmer was talking about. An all-weather field being, I'm not sure I want an artificial turf in the park, but that's my personal opinion. So I think all things being equal, I'm very grateful to the district. I would like to see the plan moved to the park at this point.
And I think I'm in agreement with virtually everybody else up here. In particular, by the way, Elizabeth at a point expressed her gratitude to Los Lomitas. I think that's important because I think we very much appreciate the fact they have a right in office. But I think the park is a good location for this. Two points I'd like to make as process points, there's some role for the park committee that we need to make sure is played as we go through this process, obviously. And then second, just as a personal matter, or rather, Elizabeth referred to the Alameda channel up there, let's make sure we take care of things up there. And Carrie's playing about gray water, I think is really a great one. Because that could be a factor if that works.
The purple pipe? No.
Yes. The use of the water in the park.
Purple pipe.
There is a possible use of excess water even outside of the park if there's excess, but at least use in the park.
But right now, we're going to be well water.
Right, but this way we wouldn't have to pump.
Right.
In fact, we'd be recharging.
That's what I was going to ask. Could this be designed to actually recharge our wells in the park? I don't know.
Absolutely. And that's something we're going to look at with drywall, something like that can recharge the aquifers down there. So those are all part of the design process when we come back to council with all the options.
Do you have, do you have what you need?
We have direction.
Terrific. Can we move on to?
Thank you, Mayor.
Matt, did we miss anything? Matt, thank you so much. I just want to acknowledge Matt Fabry, he's our CKEG representative, a staff member for Stormwater. He's the guru, he knows everything there is. And so if you had any questions about any of this, he actually helped prepare this and arranged his schedule to come down here to be with us today. I'm sorry, I just, you know.
All right, guys. One of the matches mentioned earlier. All right, let's get moving.
You have a very anxious man. No, anxious.
It's good to move on. Item number two, may I have my turn? First, if there's any member in the public who has comments, at least.
You have a good staff report.
Well, it's your staff report, Mr. Rogers.
Very quick. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have the, you received the draft before you on the table from the subcommittee consisting of Mayor Limpras and councilmember Lewis. They spent extensive time, if I'm aware of, going through this and editing and re-editing, but just like we did the last time with Measure A, it's up on the screen here for any final wordsmithing the council may desire to do. And it's authorized for signature by all five council members once it's approved by the council.
I have a quick question to the city manager. What's on the screen is the most recent one or is that the one that's in the packet? That was in the packet. The most recent one? So I guess.
I can print out of this one.
Okay. The one that's on the screen has a couple of other edits that we actually worked on over the weekend and submitted after the packet went out. And I can, if you, I can highlight what those are so that you could see from your packet. Can I do that for you? Okay. So basically, if you look in the bullet points of the projects, the 650 K series streetlight, instead of repair, we changed that word to replacement.
That's what it said. That's the draft.
Oh, that's the draft you have? Okay. So good. It's all good then?
This is the current version that you just emailed.
And okay. The other one didn't come out?
Yeah, there was an early, early draft that went out over the weekend as a working draft. But it didn't go out with the packet, it was just a working draft that was announced.
In your email? Okay. Good.
But this is the one that you submitted as your final version for editing.
Good. Matt, turn to the public, ask if there's any questions or comments on this matter that was published. Okay, hold on. Other question? Please.
My recollection, I can't see. My recollection is that the majority of the use for police was for school resource officers. And you see that listed here. So I would think that we would want to add that in and delete the stuff that we're not using to make it as factual as possible. I think that, you know, we don't want to, we want to have a statement out there that's bulletproof. And so I'd like to see at a minimum, the school resource officer. I think that that sells well with the community as well and take out the things that we're really not putting.
So just to respond to that, please, the money comes into the town's general fund and goes to police services, but it's not a specific allocation of dollars to a specific officer. So you could certainly put in there a school resource officer or something that's funded, but it's all frontline law enforcement that.
Well, when we decided in 2080, '20, we had a formula of how we determined what the 20 was.
Yes.
And it was very clear. It's actually in some of our minutes. So I would think that we would mimic those because other people have a right and capability of going and looking at what our minutes were and what our council directions were. And so I think that we should stick with that just to be accurate.
Yeah, well, absolutely. I just wanted to clarify.
I think we have a suggestion already for.
So councilmember Whitmer, I think that you're looking at the bullet points about the use of the parcel tax?
Yeah, it says it's restricted to.
Okay. So if we can do, we do have 294 words, we can do under frontline law enforcement and school resource officer and add that. But it, the parcel tax, the difference, the percentages, we set every year. And just because last year, we did percentages one way, but overall, the parcel tax is restricted to those areas of policing. And if we want to add and school resource officer in that second bullet point, I would be happy with that.
Well, I think that we need to get as close to what we've discussed in the past as possible.
Yeah, I think that it is restricted to that in the past.
And if I remember correctly, it's 1.7 or almost two officers.
It's about 370,000, which is about the salary of two officers.
Yeah, we add an officer and an SRO.
Right.
Would that work with everyone?
Yeah, it would be.
So would you want it to say frontline law enforcement and school resource officer? Is that what you're?
I like that.
Say one.
Is that 299?
Okay.
Before we dive into the words. Is it a school dash resource officer?
Good.
Okay.
Before we dive into the words, let's pull back and make sure that people like sort of the structure of the argument, the main points we're making. Overarching, does anybody okay with that? Do we have any listening?
Yeah. Such a good question. Just these projects that we've listed, these are what we put the parcel tax into?
Yeah, over the last few years.
And because we're putting this year a lot more money into light head, why don't we increase that number?
I think the 490 is including this year's allocation for the parcel tax.
Because I thought that we were spending close to a million dollars on Middlefield Road, but no.
It's not entirely all from the parcel tax. There's also Measure A funding and gas tax and other things.
And I think we're saying over the last few years, showing how the parcel tax monies have been spent.
Okay, what about the Oak Grove work? It says your parcel tax has worked.
Right. Well, let me, I'll pull up the budget and we can, what they currently.
A couple of, if we're answering, I do have a couple of specific, I guess, questions or points. I had assumed, that I was thinking, looked at this on my computer, that there was something in the software, these are going to be bullets, right? Or are they going to be these little letters? Did you, because it looks more.
So it looks better than that solid.
Should be.
Basically, yeah. Okay. And then there's, for some reason, there's a typo that remains in the bottom.
Yeah.
In the sense that vote, it should say vote.
Yeah.
Mine's correct.
Okay. All right. Rick?
I have a couple of words. Yeah, please. Okay, so I've got a couple of comments and a question, and I'm just going to go from the top. My first comment is in the third line, where it refers to one half to two acres are assessed, I think we should say a maximum of 750 annually? Because it certainly can be less, we assess it every year to reduce it.
What? Oh.
If we took 50% of the amount, it would be 375. We don't have to choose to tax 100% of the parcel tax.
But that, that's clarified in.
But it's a maximum of 175. Anyway, that's what I, that's my comment. Second, I don't really, it's, I don't know exactly, I can guess, but I don't know what frontline law enforcement is.
Yeah, that's a good point. Good point. It was somewhere.
I think that frontline implies that it's the industry, the things that you actually see and what's behind the scenes, like a detective per se. You may not see it or have penetrated it. Okay, but I'm just saying that this is going into the ballot, I would look at it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know. Okay, but I'm just saying that this is going into the ballot, I, I would look at it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know what it meant.
Actually, I think it was in the ballot argument from twenty thirteen.
Okay.
So, I think we.
Anyway, that's my comment, I, I would change that word, but I don't have a solution because I wasn't sure what it meant. And then, under the bold parcel tax, revenue cannot be used for park or civic center projects. Atherton receives, I, I, I would just, this is a net, but rather than little sales tax, I'd say almost no. Sales tax because.
Just say minimal.
Fine, I mean.
Yeah, because we're, we're finding words.
I, I'd assess that word, that's a net.
Okay.
Then, the, the only really other comment I have is, where we talk about the renewal term being reduced from four to three years to better align with revenue expenditure projections, I, rather than say and future funding needs, I prefer to address something regarding, regarding the civic center, because that's when we're gonna be able to, we're be at the end of the civic center project, and we should be able to, so my language was and reassess the need for the parcel tax as the civic center project is completed.
I agree with that.
I whole part of me disagree.
Okay, well, that's my comment.
Are we, are we limited to three hundred words?
Yes.
We can figure that out later, let's talk about the substance of this issue though. Those are my seven, why do you?
I think it's mixing the metaphors, and future funding needs is more than just the civic center needs, it's all future funding needs. And that's a, that's a more holistic approach, and rather than tying it directly to one specific major capital project or another, and I think that we want to be as broad as possible and not specific.
And not misinterpreted.
And not specific, it's kind of, yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I'm open to, to changing my mind, but the reason I, that I thought that is because if we didn't have the civic center project right now, I don't see the need for the parcel tax right now. Because we have had a budget surplus that would be sufficient to support the town. We will be using a hundred percent of that budget surplus for the civic center project. And therefore, if we didn't have the civic center project, I don't think we need it, so it seems to me that we could say, and, and one of the benefits of making it three years rather than four years is, it comes to conclusion at the end of the civic center project, and we can assess whether we need it or not at that point. I, I agree that future funding needs wouldn't cover that, but I, but I think that it's more powerful to be specific about it.
I, I, I will hundred percent agree with that, I, you know, I think that one of the arguments that I've heard, you know, when we were moving forward here, was that we talked about the reserves, we had these reserves that were gonna give us a good start on the civic center, was you guys continued to reassess the, the parcel tax when you didn't need it. And, and, and there was some anger out in the community. And so, I, I do think that we need to address that because the property values have continued up. We may or may not find other revenue sources, and, and the parcel tax may go away, so. So I'm, I'm in full agreement with, with Rick, and with his statements at the council meeting the other day, as well as the one here, which is that, you know, there may be a time in the near future where we don't do this, but at this point in time, you know, when we said we were going to move forward with, with the, the civic center, it was clear that we were going to need to have the parcel tax to continue on with all these capital projects that needed to continue while we were taking the general fund excess and applying it to pay down the, the civic center. And so, I think that there's agreement in the community and knowledge, you know, acknowledgement in the community that yeah, a vote for the Measure A was also a vote for continuing the parcel tax, and I'm hopeful that that's, that plus other people are gonna, you know, see that, but I, but I think that, you know, the fact that we had that situation where we were continually assessing and, and we, and we didn't need to or we weren't spending it, I think that we need to at least acknowledge that. So I'm, I'm in full agreement with Rick's comments, thank you.
Rick. Okay, I'm a little bit more on Elizabeth's side for the following reasons. While I would agree in a three-year horizon, that the probability based on what we currently know, yes, the civic center component, this money's, you know, there's money in the allocation, that, that process, we would consider no longer going after, or consider that option of no longer going after. But we are also spending a share of money because realistically, the amount of money that's dogged here is seven point roughly, seven point one. The property tax allocation component through the measure is only five point nine. So we are spending more money on these components than we are actually receiving on the parcel tax, therefore, a component of substitution exists, and we are using some of our surplus funds to supplement what projects that we have in the hot burning, to which we have additional hoppers. So while I would agree, but this is also a huge capital improvement project of a needs that in my belief should have been historically many set aside. Therefore, we've had to make some decisions. We haven't com, we haven't adjusted any of our components, nor are we going to be adjusting any of these components for the next, through this project component. But we've added obviously this civic center component, so I hate to say that we would highlight the fact that we wouldn't be considering it. There's, there's so many variable points of monies coming in and out, that this project itself is a necessary component. Evaluating it in three years is obviously something we would be doing, as we've committed to do. But the reality is that we're still supplementing some of our shortcomings in the DPW for, with monies out of the general fund. So, you know, that's kind of, I believe that three years from now, that discussion's clearly gonna be on the table. But why make that an opportunity to talk about, we've said that right here, parcel tax cannot be used for the civic center component, which we're not. And therefore, why are we bringing that up and say, we really aren't, and we're gonna talk about removing it in three years? I, I just don't think that's what this is about. So from, from my side, it's important, I think, I think it's a great point to say we're gonna be reassessing in three years. We're looking at it in three years because we're gonna reassess it. I, I have a specific question about whether we wanna link it to the civic center. Right, and I can actually, I would like some discussion about, about that, cause I see both sides of that, and I don't want great confusion by the way. So Rick, your language did.
Well, I'm not tied to my language.
I know, but it was actually pretty good.
My language was reassess the need as the civic center project is completed.
Right.
And we, I mean, I, I could be comfortable with just saying and reassess the need for the parcel tax in three years.
With this parcel tax.
Without linking it directly to the civic center, I think in, in the arguments within the community, that's something we can do. I actually think that it's, it's accurate that we're spending all of our general fund surplus on the civic center for the next three years, and once we are done with that, we have to reassess, and, and it may well be that there are other things that come up that we don't know about, which make the need for the, for the parcel tax, but in the absence of that, from this vantage point, and it's not from that one, but it's from this one, it looks to me like we wouldn't need it. But I don't have to link it to the civic center, but I would like to say reassess the need for the parcel tax in three years, I think that is. And, and, and I think that the opponents to any parcel tax renewal would basically make an argument that, look, you've had surpluses the last few years, you don't need it. And they would acknowledge, given that we're doing the civic center, we need it, but we need to reassess it in three years.
I, I think, if I could make a comment on that, I think that, that sentence, the renewal term of the parcel tax has been reduced from four years to three years to better align with revenue expenditure projections and future funding needs was a way to say exactly what we're trying to say. And so if you want to change that from four years to three years to, actually, it's to better align with the voting cycle and to reassess the need of the parcel tax. Because I think that if we're gonna, instead of the revenue expenditure projections and future funding needs, that's a very broad concept, and that's what we do all the time. We assess our revenue and expenditure projections and our future funding needs, that's what we do every year. Right? In our budget projections, in our budget allocations, that's, so that's a broad policy that we do. But if you want to be specific, really, the reason we're, we're wanting to reduce it from four to three years is to get on the presidential election cycle, so more people will be able to come out. We're on an odd cycle now, on that odd year. And to better align with that, and coincidentally, to re, the funding need of the, you know, we will essentially be finished with the civic center, our largest capital improvement project that we've ever done, and everybody felt that that was critical to do. And so, coincidentally, that will be finished, and so we can reassess, you know, since we don't have to fund that anymore, how much money will, excess money will we be able to bring in that will offset the need for the parcel tax? I sincerely believe the parcel tax, and I meet people every day, and we talk about it, and they say, you know, it's a no-brainer, seven hundred and fifty dollars a year for my acre up to two acres going to the town, a hundred percent of the money is a no-brainer for capital improvement projects and for police services. I think that, in my experience, the majority, two-thirds majority of the residents are happy to do that. They feel that that's a, a way that they can invest in the town. So if, I'm okay with saying to, to modify, reduce from four to three years to, what, get along with the voting cycle and reassess the. Yeah, something like that.
Okay.
So, first off, yeah, I, I don't think we should say specifically in this section, the civic center, the civic center may extend. I mean, there may be change notices that, that push the construction cost out or construction activity out, so. So I wouldn't wanna say specifically it's tied, you know, imply that it's tied to the civic center, because it also can be misconstrued, you know, we have in bold, it's not, you can't use it for the civic center, and then we're talking about the civic center down below. So I would take that out. However, I do think it's important that, that we say, you know, I, I don't agree with saying, hey, we're aligning with the, the voting cycle, I, I think that that's not necessarily the, a key issue. What I do think is important, and, and, you know, I'll point out that, you know, the last time we decided, should we vote for the parcel tax or not, even though we had tremendous reserves, you know, seeing that Atherton now wasn't making as much progress as we thought they were going to make, you know, and kind of reading the tea leaves, you know, was starting to recognize that we were gonna need this money really to hopefully overturn Measure A, or use Measure A to overturn Measure L, and then, and then be able to use this for the civic center. So at, at that time, I voted for it, whereas every other year, I've said, I think we have proper reserves, and we seem to be covering our things, and I was not in favor of it. And so, I do believe that in the future, and especially, you know, with the, with the, the extra need, it's, it's, it's really very, very clear that we need to continue to assess this, it's very, very clear, you know, that when we pass Measure A, that we need it, and we would need this money, you know, every year to maintain our spending on the capital infrastructure at the levels that we're doing today, and then taking the excess general funds and moving it over. So that's clear, and, and our projection right now is three years, so I wouldn't wanna say, again, civic center, as, as you asked, what do we feel about tying it directly to the civic center, Mike, I, I'm not in favor of mentioning civic center again. But I am in favor of making sure that, that the people know that, that we recognize that our, our tax revenues and potentially other funding sources may supersede the need for this parcel tax. And I think that it's important that we recognize that because, you know, unlike, unlike Councilwoman Lewis, I'm hearing from people that say, hey, seven fifty, I, you know, if I could save the seven fifty, or whatever it is, I, I would appreciate doing that, and I don't think you guys need it, if you, if we give you more money, you're just gonna spend it. And so, I, you know, I think that we need to do a proper, proper job of at least notifying them things.
So if I look at the, the language, but I, I like Rick's concept of stating explicitly, we are, we are gonna be reassessing it as conditions change, you know, and then you go.
So I, I would suggest, I, I actually like the better align with revenues than expenditure projections, and then I, I I propose that we add and reassess the need for the parcel tax.
I don't, I don't understand how that, read the whole sentence again, Rick, it doesn't make sense.
Well, I think the concept is a reason we went from, we, there are a lot of, multiple reasons why we changed from four years to three years, but the end result of that is that more frequently, people are gonna reconsider the parcel tax.
Yeah, we will re, we reassess the parcel tax renewal at the end of the term every time.
So we also do revenue expenditure projections every year, we can just not have an argument, but I think that it's better to be explicit about, we're gonna reassess it in three years, it.
It's obvious, though.
It's not obvious.
It is, because it's been ended in three years, we reassess it.
Okay, I, I, I would rather be explicit about it.
I agree with Rick. Karen, I agree, we all know that there's a process and we'll reevaluate the term, we look at it every year. But if we're putting anything in there, I mean, mainly, I mean, reevaluating the term expires, I mean, we're just really focused. That's, we do it already, we're just reevaluating it. I think maybe it's just because the public generally doesn't realize that we actually review it every year, that means component. And we also would reconsider it in the three year, I know you're right, we already do it, but the general public may not get the grasp that we're doing it. Yeah, I, I personally think it's important, because we are giving the voters more, you know, more control of the process because they're getting a chance in three years to agree or disagree on parcel tax.
No, we're gonna reassess it and not put it out to voters in, at the end.
I understand, but they actually have the final say, so.
Of course, they have that final say right now.
I understand, but my point is that, that we're going to them now, and we're asking, we're saying, you know, we would like to redo this, and we shortened the term from four years to three years. I think a big part of that is we, is to tell them, you have more control than if we did it four years, we did it conservatively to come back in three years, you have a chance to review it again if we go back to you, ask you the parcel tax again.
And, and I'd just add that the big difference in three years is that we'll have real visibility as we complete the biggest project we've ever done in our history, and what we're spending all of our surplus on for the next three years. I don't, I, I, I'm fine to not be explicit about that in here, but I think that's the reason. And that is, that, that's the difference between three and four years.
Yeah.
And it gives us an ability to reassess it, and I think people that have had questions about supporting the parcel tax because of our prior surpluses, and there have been those questions, I've heard about them too, will be comforted that we're explicitly telling them, we're moving this up to reassess it at that time.
Right, and Mike, I, I think the other reason we don't go down the road of saying, hey, we're moving it to align with a voting year, is that once you're aligned to that voting year, it will go back to four years. And don't kid anybody by saying that, because you say, well, we're gonna vote every, every presidential election. We're not gonna keep it, then move it to an odd year, et cetera, et cetera, so. Then the following year, it'd be a gubernatorial election, then it's gonna be an odd year, and then it goes back to a presidential year. People will move it, no matter whether it's us or some other people sitting in these chairs, they're gonna move it to a four year. So I think you shouldn't be mentioning that, because people will see right through that, and that may cause some anger, so what we need to do is move forward.
I, frankly, the language that's there didn't say that, okay? That was, I, I, frankly, the language that's there didn't say that, okay? I'm not suggesting that.
Can we?
I, we didn't suggest that, did we?
I thought I heard you suggest that.
No, but we didn't suggest that. The language that's there is the language that was suggested.
So, what I, what I've heard is, the, on this paragraph, which is the key paragraph, we're, we're all talking about making a change, um, or potentially making a change at that "and", so it would read, the renewal term of the parcel tax would reduce from four years to three years to better align with revenue expenditure projections, "and", and then Rick had some suggested language about reassessing, what would be said to reassess?
And, and I'm happy to change it, but I said it, and reassess the need for the parcel tax.
Yes, Carrie.
Good.
So, why don't we just take out parcel tax in the first, uh, line? The renewal term has been reduced from four to three years to better align with revenue expenditure, because we're gonna run out of word and-
Right, we're at three hundred.
Yeah.
Two ninety-eight.
Do you want Judy to make that change so we can see what that looks like?
Yeah.
Sure, let's do it.
The term has been reduced from four to three years. How about four years to three years, four to three years?
Yeah, that's simple. It's three years.
To better align with revenue expenditure projections, "and", then Rick's language.
Reassess the need for the parcel tax.
We delete those other ones.
And take out future funding.
Future funding, yes, we're seeing that here.
Uh, through the chair, there's also several words in here that you have a backslash that count as two words and not one.
Oh, they do.
They only count as one word if they're recognized in the dictionary.
So, two-thirds would be two, third of a word.
So, I, I, I mean, I, I thought the others-
No, that's fine, it's police slash emergency slash ped.
There were two other suggested changes, one of which saves words, and one of which adds, saves a word, and one of which adds a couple.
Yeah.
And one was in the first paragraph to add a maximum of in front of the seven fifty.
Yeah. Or it doesn't say the word actually.
Uh, are assessed annual, set.
And the third, are assessed after the word assessed. They ma- add a maximum of. And if we can't do that, then we don't have to do it, that's not what it's going to say. And then the other, I mean, I don't know, I, I would, I would agree to change it.
I don't know.
Little to minimal sales tax, I mean.
I'm good.
Where's the?
So, did you see where that is, under the bold?
No, not that, not that.
Yeah, you got that. Oh, is that?
This was little.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's right, that's it.
Okay.
So, we're good, let's count it.
So, does word count it?
It does not.
So, we have to, uh, adjust our slashes, okay?
And then Camino Alago is-
It's at three hundred, but because of the hyphenated words?
So, do bike, uh, not slash ped?
Right, you might wanna do pedestrian, just so people-
Yeah, or bicycle.
Since ped is a word, you might wanna do pedestrian.
Yeah, bicycle.
Roots.
Why don't you take out all the names of the streets and just say major drainage?
Uh, because.
I think it's good to.
I like that.
Uh, Camino Alago.
But I don't know that we need Ucled slash, oh, Pohemus, and, I don't know, what, was the word more on Pohemus or Ucled?
Uh, it was more on, it was, it was connections to both, so it was the, the break that went through.
Do you have to say series, streetlight, why don't you just say streetlight? That takes a word out.
And these, the dollar figures, and, and Bill mentioned your earlier question, these are projects that are allocated for the past budget cycle, not the current budget cycle, so they would go up if they're current.
Yeah, and it says, it says a lot of the last times.
Just if they're current, that's the cycle numbers, I mean, they're already committed, we've already established.
Which have an awarded contract.
But we may not spend them, you know, but there are examples where we've committed and haven't spent.
Okay, but something we already are doing, guys are surveying a metal field road and we're gonna go through it right now.
Okay, just to begin, just for a second, we could add a specific suggestion to eliminate the word series in the project that says six hundred and fifty K, uh, streetlight replacements?
I like the series, because it's not all the streetlights around, it's the series streetlight replacement project, which was really in Wood Park.
Yeah, there are two different types of lights out there.
Yeah.
No, I understand, I see, from my perspective, I think most people don't know, and we're trying to make it probably a streetlights, but that's okay.
Can we approve this the way it is and just give the committee latitude to make sure? Because you gotta walk through the whole thing and, and count it manually, right?
It looks like you're probably about one word over the way I would kinda-
Take out the series then.
Yeah, it's one word.
Yeah, well, because Camino Alago's considered one word.
No, we didn't do Camino Alago.
But it's considered one word, and word is picking it up as three words.
Oh, Camino Alago drainage, right, uh-huh.
That's one word to take to it.
It's a proper noun, yeah.
It's a name, it's a proper noun.
So, there, there's a little wiggle word, I, wiggle worm, room, worm, yeah, yeah.
Room, we love those wiggle words.
What did we end up doing, we started checking on the school, we do have school resource officer out there.
Yeah, I did.
Can we go down from the top?
Uh, one, one other, before we do that, one thing I learned from Measure A, I thought that, that, um, bolding was a very important part, one of the things we looked at, and I think some people afterward said, you know, I wish we had used bolding more effectively, so why don't we take a moment and just see if there's something we wanna bold?
So, that's okay, bro.
Yeah, that was right.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, he's been bolding, two-thirds majority is required. And if somebody's on the borderline and not saying, do I wanna go vote or not, you know, because it's an odd year. This might spread them on.
Do you wanna pull it out from a, uh, from part of that paragraph and put it as a separate sentence, you know?
Separate paragraph.
Separate paragraph, yeah.
That'd be okay, I think that's a good idea.
That'd be okay.
Let's do that.
Is it in bolded?
In bolded?
In bolded.
The whole thing, yeah.
It's the Department of Redundancy Department to say, a two-thirds voting majority is required. Why don't you just say, a two-thirds votes is required?
Okay, that takes a word out.
It's, that, that, that takes care of the word.
We only needed one, didn't we?
About one.
About one, maybe two, maybe two.
No, that would, that would sit on more.
I'd go down to the next paragraph where it says, vote yes to renew the parcel tax, and just say, take the word parcel out. Everybody, you're only talking about that tax.
No, I mean to say, yes, but, vote yes up.
Are we gonna continue to say, vote yes?
Yes.
And continually sort of funding.
Rick raised a question about the word frontline and then law enforcement, that came over, do we wanna keep that or do we pull that?
I think you, a sentiment means feet on the streets.
I, I-
Frontline law enforcement.
Frontline law enforcement is what the cops grant pays for, what all the federal state funds pays for.
That's what it's called.
That's what it's called.
Yeah.
It was in the, it was in the ballot argument in twenty thirteen.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that if you're in police administration, you know what it means.
Last time we asked Barbara, she don't. What, what does Barbara say?
Barbara, no question.
I did not come up with a new word for frontline.
Right, you can, you can just say police officers if you want to.
Yeah, well, I think we're right.
It's a law enforcement.
If, if, if we like, if we prefer it, like, we are at three hundred, we're pretty close to it.
Yeah, we're okay.
In our staff reports.
Go back to the formatting, I think it's, I think it would be stronger if these were book, indented bullets instead of that asterisk.
Yes, yeah, I agree.
Can we, yeah, pull it up. Do you have to do that?
Do bullets count, Chris?
Yes.
No, no, they don't, not as word count.
Oh, oh, right.
Yeah, bullets, yeah, I agree. And then small grammatical bits you're doing.
And same thing for the-
And I don't know, maybe for the next one, just leave them without the asterisks, you know, if you don't, I, I, if you indent them, then it sort of takes away from those other points under the parcel tax is restricted to, which-
That's true.
Personally, I, I think it's more, more, more right.
I agree with that. Uh, another grammatical, small grammatical, like, don't we, when you have colon, it usually goes semi, 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 period at the end? When you do a list?
Oh.
Is that something I wanna do or not do? In any, like, I am on any list that starts with colon.
I don't, you mean the, I don't think it even, you mean after the bold.
In legal projects, but this is not a-
Yeah, that's why I'm asking you guys, I'm just, the elements of style, I'm just, eighth grade, man, I mean, you know.
I must say, I have a teacher.
I still have that, though. It's a great one, great one. Any, it, it, don't ask that.
That's two words.
It's good. Any, any other suggested improvements? So, if people are good with it process-wise, can we get the, the committee approved, it turns out we're over a word to make sure we're complying and beyond that?
Yes.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, you know.
We need to put the dots, the, the bullets underneath the projects and indent those, the million, the-
We decided not to do that.
No, 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 I, I, I actually, I think it's better to leave it this way, it, it highlights the item, it highlights the, the whole agenda.
I didn't hear that.
So, I have a question about the capitalization of M and K for millions and thousands.
My, my wordsmith expert says, if you really needed to save a few words, where it says projects over the last few years include, you could put recent projects to include colon and you say, cut that.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Perfect, I like that.
That's why I paid for all that education for it.
Yes, recent, projects.
We thank you, we thank you, Mr. Collins.
And we're sure glad she watches it.
And, 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 you know, less is more, because people-
I agree.
Yes.
So.
Maybe we should bold the numbers.
I don't know, no, I, I, I don't wanna, I, I don't know.
Do you like the capital count or the lowercase M from million?
Cap.
I don't care.
See what it looks like.
We can also, putting all the zeros.
See the number better.
I mean, would that make it strong?
That's why I know it is strong.
Yeah, make it lowercase, make the K's lowercase.
The numbers would make it strong.
Yeah. I like the capital.
Do you wanna put the, all the numbers?
Who cares?
Four, zero, zero, comma, zero, 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 zero?
No.
That's, that's, I, I would deal with the caps, that's not a, I don't care.
I don't care, I, I just thought we'd take a look at it. I mean, I, I originally did, but now.
I would wish, I'd say, yeah.
Okay.
Success, the proxy doesn't work.
I, I would move that we accept the argument as revised and delegate to the committee the ability to change it in the event that there is any, uh, further word count change necessary. And I would agree, so.
All clear?
A tie?
Repose, not-
There's another part to this item, and that's rebuttal arguments. And the, the mayor can select the same subcommittee to work on a rebuttal, and they can call a special meeting to approve it.
We go through that, please.
Uh, August twenty-eighth is when regulations are due.
I think that's a good idea, I think that makes sense.
Okay. So, would we need a motion on that?
Just, it consensus of the council that the mayor can use the same committee, who may have used the same committee.
And then to that separate-
Mayor is not appointing.
Don't do, wait a second, don't have the council approve it if the mayor just appoints it, because then it becomes an ad hoc Brown Act committee.
Well, in terms of a process.
So, what's his name's process, Josh?
His process is you appoint whoever you want to do that.
Okay, yes, so, I thought about long hard, and I think it should be the same committee, which was, was little to myself.
That's a great idea.
Okay.
That sounds good.
All right, now then, do we need to discuss scheduling a meeting, um, near August twenty-eighth, what do we have on calendar?
Uh, there's no meetings for the month of August in terms of the council set or established for August, in August. Uh, I don't know about major vacations other than my own.
And who would it?
I'll be gone too.
Oh, I'm gone too.
August twenty-eighth is what day of the week, I mean?
Probably Monday, right?
Monday.
Monday, of course it is.
Yeah, of course, of course it is.
You can, you can call that special meeting at any point, you're on the seventh day now.
Well, yeah, I'd rather just get, assess the council about availability, um, and, and we don't all have to be here too, we can do it by phone if we, or some people can do it by phone.
So, you can sign the actual argument.
I'm gonna go get the argument submission form, so don't leave before.
Okay, we won't leave before then. So, um, how about August twenty-eighth itself, it's a Monday, we could do, does that work or is it not?
Nine o'clock, it's right here.
Is it August twenty? Yes.
I'll keep that with radiation.
You can, I'm fishing. No, but I can probably get cellular phone access.
No, you can't get cellular phone.
We're deficient.
No, I, I, I might have to change my fishing arrangements, but one week I stay, I'm going somewhere, but that's all.
You can make this. We're just doing-
If, if everybody else, I'll, I'll figure out how. Does it work for everybody else, August twenty-eighth?
There's a tentative call on this question.
Tensive call is at nine AM, uh, August twenty-eighth, okay?
On the Tuesday, if we have to move it over to Thursday.
All right.
Well, no, it would be before that, not after it.
It'd have to be, yeah.
That would be prior. So, obviously, that'll, we'll, we'll get that confirmed as we get closer, but that'll be back, twenty-eighth. Are there any other practical issues to resolve on this issue?
Uh, not for that, I don't know. You have to sign a form, but just don't get that.
Yeah, and we have, but after a public comment, I'm sure. On, I don't- Okay, we asked for public comment previously on this issue, there ever the public want to comment on it, just like?
Yeah.
There's so few members of the public, just tell me, no. Okay, um, all right, so if that does that, unless we want to, item three, I'll turn to, uh, Josh.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, um, as I come through all my papers, uh, there's a strange new law that requires any new changes in compensation for city managers to, um, require that the, uh, any compensation be read orally in the, at the meeting. So, um, this, this is the, usually called city managers evaluation, like, to a subcommittee that recommended a, um, a revision to deferred compensation that has not had to, um, but in order to make it legal, we have to comply with Senate Bill fourteen thirty-six, which says, you have to read orally any changes. So, with this Fifth Amendment to the Employment Agreement, after five years of service to the town, the city manager will receive two hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars per year, a four hundred dollar per month auto allowance, a two thousand dollar per year technology benefit allowance forfeited if not used, a four hundred and eighty-one dollar per month contribution to the approved four fifty-seven deferred compensation plan, which is the new part, and the potential for a fifteen thousand dollar annual performance bonus. The city manager receives retirement, health, and lead benefits consistent with all other management staff. The city manager pays the employee share of retirement, seven percent of pay. Total amount of pay excluding benefits to the city manager is two hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Total annual costs with benefits, including assumed full receipt of the technology allowance and the current CalPERS employer pension rate, nine point two percent, is two hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. This amount does not include the potential non-pensionable annual performance bonus or the accrual of two weeks of vacation per year. That concludes my report.
So, do we need any approval of the business? First, any questions from council? Uh, I guess I should turn out to the public, any questions or comments from the members of the public on this?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll get back, questions from council or comments from council?
Well, I'll make a comment, I think that the committee did an excellent job. Um, I understand essentially what this deferred comp amount is, is, over the year, it's equal to the two point seven five percent raise that was given to miscellaneous employees for the town. Um, I appreciate that the city manager has agreed to take that in a non-personal, uh, manner in order to support our effort to reduce our pension obligations, uh, which are killing every municipality. And I think, and overall, I really appreciate the solution.
What else, Mr. Speaker?
Well, I thought that we gave miscellaneous people a two percent raise, not a two point seven.
Two point seven five.
Okay.
Uh, this is the two point seven five, just translate it into-
You just had a question about, well, it was two point seven five.
Two point zero zero, I see.
Okay.
I understand. Any other, before we, can I get a motion, please?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
opposed, me?
Question to adjourn.
Can't move until, uh, it's recent, I said, I heard she's-
Yeah, we can't move, we have to sit here, she's, uh, that's why.
But we can sign it after.
We can adjourn.
Well, I thought she was going to count the numbers, and then you guys might have to make the change. Okay.
So, but, but we can adjourn, however, if there's, there was a motion to that, was there a second?
Yes.
Okay. We are, please don't leave.